Okay, it is 7:00 PM. This is the Alvernet City Council meeting, Thursday, February 14th, 2019. Again, 7:00 PM. We'll go ahead and get started. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'm gonna go ahead and advance Deputy Tyndall from the Lynn County Sheriff's Department to the top of the agenda so we can get back on the road. Deputy Tyndall, I'll go ahead and recognize you.
Yes, sir. Deputy Jim Tyndall, Lynn County Sheriff's Office, for the city of Alvernet. Required hours are 43. Through January is 121.2. There were 30 total calls for service.
Okay, looking over the report, council, any questions about this? We do appreciate you giving us three times the hours that are necessary also being up here and handling. I know you were busy with several accidents and things like that, so...
There were probably a few.
We do appreciate you being in town and assisting us and taking care of it, especially with many snow bands on and a lot of vehicles in and out of the ditch and here and there. So, questions from council, reference anything on the sheriff's report? City clerk, maintenance?
Chief?
Thanks for looking out when there's school events on people parked down the street.
Yeah, it's a tough one. Getting to them is hard. Before and after.
Any questions, Park Chief? Very good, thank you, Deputy.
Thank you.
Good night.
Take care.
All right, given that, we'll go ahead and get back to the regular agenda. Second item on the agenda is the pledge allegiance. We do have the flag up there. We'd ask you to stand and go ahead and do the pledge allegiance, something we do here in the city of Alvernet. I'll go ahead and lead us. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Alvernet. All right, we'll go ahead and move on. Item three, the roll call. I would ask the clerks to go ahead and call the roll to establish we do have agenda to conduct business this evening.
Counselor Menzinger?
Present.
Counselor Sarrazin, here. Counselor Shawn?
Present.
Counselor Shawn?
Present.
Very good, thank you. Let the record reflect that we do have all the council members here and enough members to conduct business for a forum. Item number four is approval of the agenda. I will go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the agenda as submitted this evening.
So moved.
Moved by Shawn, seconded by Trump. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. The sheriff's report has already been conducted. I'll go ahead and move forward to the mayor's report. Do have a few things to say this evening, other than it being February, our national heart for the month of February, I hope everybody's taking care of themselves, and being Groundhog's Day on February 2nd, which was also my birthday, by the way. So, for those of you that thanked me on Facebook or anywhere else, I do appreciate that. Thank you. I was 49, I'm not afraid to admit it. Six more years to retirement, so when you get to the mileage of what becomes pretty important. So, thank you for all those that did recognize that, I appreciate it. Speaking of Facebook, I'm gonna talk about it just for a moment. I know that the clerk is gonna mention it in her report, but we do have an Alvernet City Facebook page. I believe we're up to 110, 20, like, I don't know what we're up to, but I know we're well over 100. So, I do appreciate the folks out there that have liked the Facebook page and are following us out there. It works in, I would say, you know, conjunction with our website, not competition, so the folks that need something off the particular website for a form or basic information or look up the minutes, that's a good forum for that, but the Facebook page allows us to get immediate information out, especially during this very, very busy snow month that we've been having in February and even January for that point. So, both have their purposes, and I would encourage folks that watch us on YouTube for these minutes, or even the folks in the audience or for council, to have folks like us on Facebook and follow us, just to keep up with what's going on within the city. The other thing I'd like to mention, if you do watch us either on the YouTube videos that are submitted, or that if you're in and out of City Hall on a regular basis, you'll see that as a project that we've done over the last year, this council and myself, as well as the clerk and our maintenance people, have worked very hard to improve City Hall. This particular seating area that we're in right now is a result of that. That is done by our city maintenance people, by our clerk. This council was behind that, and I am very appreciative to those folks. We have a very professional setting. A little bit later in the agenda, I'll be talking about renewing our three-year lease for next month for this facility, and I'm, again, very appreciative for this professional environment that we have in. I'm very happy with council chambers now. And also, if you've been here before, you know this back area was kind of closed off, we didn't use it much. By allowing this particular seating area, we have increased the area that we have for seating for our citizens. Sometimes we were pushed almost back to the clerk's seating area, so that wasn't very good for our public either that when they come in, especially for large meetings. So, everything across the board has been done as improvement. We did it organically, we did it at a very constrained cost, and as an example, council folks came in and painted the walls. The work was done, again, organically by our city folks, so you can see that we were very frugal in our costs with that. So, again, much thanks on that. In March, the council meeting in March is when we're gonna have our open house. So, prior, I believe we're gonna have it prior to the council meeting, I think that's the plan. We'll get that out in a newsletter to the folks within the city, but again, for those folks, and on the Facebook page, but again, for the folks that watch us on YouTube, you're gonna get the heads up tonight that we'll be having an open house for our March meeting. People will be able to come in and see City Hall and the improvements that we've made. I hope very much that the weather has improved for the month of March. That's all I have for my mayor's report. I do appreciate your attention on that. We'll move on to council reports at this time. I'll go ahead and recognize Councilman Menzinger.
A couple things, Guy, great job with the snow removal, you and John.
Thank you.
I know what it's like. Danielle, thank you for all your budget work, and to everybody, I apologize for having to be in the last budget meeting. I was lacking sleep due to snow removal. You have to echo what you said, Guy, the council area, City Hall, this looks great. Good job, everyone. That's all.
Well, I think, Danielle, thank you for all your time and patience on the budget and helping all of us get through that. It's a learning curve for everybody, so I think it's going well, and we're all learning a lot, so thank you.
I guess I'd like to mirror what others have said, is that I think there's, our streets, snow removal was done excellently, and I think the people that contributed, the painting and this, the new facility here, good job done.
Nothing to add to what I've been said.
I think that you need to start down here sometimes so we can...
So, there's something left to say by the time it gets down to you?
Again, just echoing what everybody else says.
You know, I'm gonna do that. Somebody remind me that next week. We're gonna start on the right, and we're gonna move left so you can get something. You can get some cookies, it looks like, down there, at least, so that's a plus.
I think I've got something to say for next week.
Your hands have to be ready.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to citizen comments. In the city of Alvernet, we have two types of citizen comments, both agenda items and non-agenda items. The first one is agenda items. I'll remind everybody that if you wish to make comments on agenda items, this would be the time and place to do that. You are limited to five minutes. I would ask that you state your name and address clearly for the record, and again, you'll have up to five minutes to make any comments you would like to make on agenda items. Is there anyone here that would like to make any comments on agenda items this evening? Okay, Cena, we'll go ahead and move on to non-agenda items. Again, this is the time and place to do that. You'd have up to five minutes and state your name and address for the record, and you can make any comments you would like to on non-agenda items. Okay, Cena, then we'll go ahead and move on to item number nine, written reports. We'll start with the fire chief. Chief Graham, we had an opportunity to review your written report here. I'll, see there is a few items on here. We'll go ahead and turn this over to you. Is there anything else you'd like to add to your report, sir?
I just wanna remind you, April 6th, Fire Girl Fire Station, fundraiser. Yeah, there's another one, we're gonna help the Fullers out to car show they're gonna do, March 22nd, we took one for them and stuff.
What was that date again, sir?
March 22nd.
22nd. Clerk, would you make sure these dates get added to the Facebook page also? Anything else, Chief?
Uh, maybe, don't hold me that date, 'cause I'm on, that's a Friday.
Would you just update Danielle so we...
I'll do it next, yeah.
Okay.
Saturday night, we're gonna do our appreciation there.
Okay.
So, I'll need guys' credit card. I started to do the money thing, and it's messed up, so I'll get it to you next month, but, so we can get that sorted out, but, so like, Saturday, I'll pick it up from here or...
This?
This Saturday.
This Saturday, okay. We'll have to, yeah, I'm leaving early Saturday morning, so I'll have to make touch base tomorrow.
Yes, 'cause I gotta work on this Saturday.
Oh, okay. Any appreciation for the firefighters?
Yeah.
All right, very good. All right, with that, you can coordinate that.
Yep, not a problem.
All right, any questions for fire chief, council?
Oh, yeah, on your bunker gear quote and stuff, that's gonna leave us with about $20,000.
That, sorry, that's later in the agenda. He's on new business. From new business.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Do you wanna address it now or at the later on?
Doesn't matter.
On the agenda item?
I just thought he was here.
You're gonna be here later on for the agenda item?
Yeah.
All right, very good, we can defer to them, that's fine. Any other questions, references to report? All right, very good, then we'll move on to public works. We'll recognize, Guy.
Only thing we're, that isn't on the, on the report that we're battling a little bit right now is getting salt. You might have heard us talking about before the meeting started, Marion agreed to supply us with salt, and with all the current activity, I'm having a tough time getting a response. I'm not in desperate shape, but I could use some more, and I think everybody's supplies are tightening, so, not a huge deal. We still have a bag of the snowball material that we've used the last couple of years. I saved it on purpose for that reason, so, it's, we'll be fine. I'm not too concerned. I'm gonna start looking tomorrow for other sources, just in case, so...
The only thing I can say about it, since I never played there, is I know we have salt at a parts terminal, and I know I worked Saturday to push salt up because trucks are coming in, but trucks never showed, so that's sort of an issue. I know they have salt, but, it's, yeah, I don't know why he's not responding.
I'm starting to think that next budget year, we probably oughta try and work in a salt and sand shed, and maybe work into purchasing the quantity ahead of time, kinda like we used to do, but we got away from it because it took up so much space, but if we had space to store it that didn't eat up our other storage, then, you know, maybe that's something we need to look at. We're not in desperate straits, don't get me wrong, but we might be able to buy better, buy sand in the height of summer when it's dry and store it under a roof, you know, makes sense. We'll see, and see what the cost of the structure would be.
Sorry, I have an idea for that.
Yeah, we're a long ways off from that.
Hit me up about it.
Well, good. You think we'll be all right for the rest of the year? Yeah, I'll find a way. I mean, it might cost us a little more, the snowball material is more, you know, but we can go down to the trailer and run over to Hockington and have two mini book bags full of it in no time, and, yeah, we'll be fine, I'm sure. If I've gotta drive in and cut down Mr. Miller and Marion, I'll get an answer, so then I know, that's all I need to know, is I just need to know, can we have a little or not?
Okay.
Just having trouble having him get back to me.
Well, I think folks are pleased, from what I've heard with the way you guys are maintaining the streets, so...
Yeah, other than that, it's just routine, you've been saying, it's that, nothing out of the ordinary, so, everything's working pretty well.
Any other questions for public works? Okay, then we'll go ahead and move on to the city clerk's report, and the only notation I have here is also updated a little bit on the budget. Anything from you, Danielle?
I'm meeting with the clerk from Ely this Saturday. She's coming here, and we're gonna work through the budget together. I have most of it put together, but I just wanna make sure the numbers are in the right places and that it looks appropriate, and then we'll need to have one more meeting to review all the council numbers before we publish the preliminary budget, and then later in the agenda, there's an item to set the date for the public hearing, and then we should be good after that to go ahead and get some move.
Very good. I do appreciate your work on the budget, as well as the rest of the council, because I've missed the majority of the budget meetings due to other commitments or not feeling well or something. It seems like they've all been timed poorly. The vast majority of the budget work this year has been done by you and the council, so I do appreciate that, so, we'll go from there. Yes, sir?
The critical date, from what I see here, is the 22nd to get it published in the paper on time.
The 21st.
21st, excuse me, yeah.
Yeah, that's the, the Lynn Newsletter has the deadline of the Thursday prior to the Tuesday publication by noon, so by noon on 21st, they have to have it to the Lynn Newsletter for that following Tuesday's publication.
I have a suggestion on that, if there's gonna be any issue, maybe call Rayanne ahead of time and say, we will be publishing a budget, but if it's not, you know, and I know she wants to see an exact amount of space so she can lay her paper out, but you might be able to talk her into a later deadline if necessary. I mean, I think you can make it, but if necessary, call her ahead in advance and say, "Look, we're gonna have it in there, we don't know exactly what size, but can you save us some room?"
You feel all right about it right now?
Yeah, I just need to get everybody collaborate on a date and time to meet.
I'd be all right, yeah, we're talking, I know it's not all the time, but our next meeting...
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Next Wednesday, right?
I haven't been able to get everybody to agree on a date and time that works yet, so...
Okay, well, we need to have another meeting sometime.
Correct, before next Thursday.
Before.
Okay. All right, well, we'll continue to discuss that outside of council, and that's an administrative issue then. All right...
Mayor, could I interject? This phone call actually just is a public works issue. Evidently, Morris Neighbors passed away.
Yeah, I believe a couple days ago.
Yeah, and so someone from...
Scott Stick.
Scott Stick.
Township.
Yeah, he's from the township, was asking if it's possible that we maybe could go plow snow and spread sand over at the Christian Church in Lafayette, or at the cemetery, I'm guessing.
Cemetery.
Yeah, they go to church here, but they're gonna, he's gonna be buried in that cemetery, so...
The funeral's gonna be at the Antioch Christian Church.
Oh, it's, oh, it'll be big enough that they, okay. So, I'm assuming this would be at the cemetery?
Right.
I have spread salt and sand for both churches during funerals in poor weather like this before, and we didn't charge, the township is offering to pay to go over and plow snow and spread salt and sand. Do we have any opinions on that?
They just said the sand, they're gonna plow it, I think.
Just the sand, they're gonna plow it, okay.
But they want it done on Monday by 10:00.
Yeah, and that's fine, I think we can have John do that. I'll be at a conference in the morning, but I'm sure John can run over and do it if we tell him in advance if that's okay with you.
We can consider this administrative business, pleasure of the council here, any issue?
I think we should be good neighbors and do it.
We've done it before, I just wanted to mention while I have it out here, we have this short notice coming Monday, a few days away.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the consent agenda. Clerk, any changes to the consent agenda?
I have the two recent invoices that were on the claims list, so the recent invoice for public works is for $1,437.21, and the recent statement for myself is $692.80, and I included a breakdown of the charges.
Other than those two items?
No, that's all.
Any issue with the...
No, I've looked at them already.
All right, those two items have been added, they've been reviewed. Other than those two items amended to the consent agenda, I'd seek a motion to approve them as amended. Moved by Trump, seconded, it sounds like by Sarrazin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries, consent agenda approved as submitted. We'll move on to new business. The fire chief, this is the bunker gear request and possible motion to approve this. I'll go ahead and recognize you, Chester, it seems like we have a couple of...
You know, Steve, is there any other major things you're gonna wanna do now on 1st of July?
No, I'm going, we'll wanna order air packs soon, just, they can be later on, just...
Because that'll be in next year's budget, you mean?
Yes.
Well, order them, but not need for them anyway. I think what Chester's referring to, there's enough in your account right now.
Yeah.
You can maybe do more than five sets of bunker gears, is that what you're...
But it's going, March 1st, they're going up six and a half percent.
What I'm trying to say is...
Out for speed.
We're gonna, gonna have about $20,000 or less left in our budget for the fire department, and I wanted to know if you had any other major purchases that you were...
I mean, there'll be some little things, but not major.
Okay, well, that's...
Unless something major happens.
Well, that's unforeseen, you can't forget that.
So, with this purchase of bunker gear, is this kind of a four or five-year rotation?
Every year, I've been buying five pairs.
Okay.
All of our bunker gears, both assets slightly smaller.
Okay.
And so I've been buying five sets a year, so it's not...
How many total do you have now?
I think this will be fifteen.
How many do you need total?
Probably like twenty-five to thirty. I'm just trying to buy them every, so much every year, so it's just not a huge...
Other questions for the chief? All right, he has the $14,475. He has the funding in his equipment budget, it is discretionary, any, if there's no other question for the chief, it'd seek approval or a motion for approval for 14,475? It's moved by Ennison.
I'd second.
Seconded by Sarrazin. Do we need a roll call on this, for this amount, or is it...
I would do a roll call.
Would you call the roll call, please?
Counselor Menzinger?
Aye.
Counselor Sarrazin?
Aye.
Counselor Shawn?
Aye.
Counselor Shawn?
Aye.
Counselor Hennessy?
Aye.
The record reflect, it was approved, and you're good to go, chief.
Thank you.
All right, yep, you're welcome. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to the City Hall lease. This is something that's come up in the past, we've discussed it within the last year or so, I went ahead and marked it as an agenda item and not as old business. Our lease expires in February, there's a new one that we have proposed in March. Basically, the question is whether or not we wanna do it as a one-year or a three-year lease, it's the same leases we've done in the past, however, we have the option to do a three-year lease this time. If you approve it, it's the, I believe, the same numbers we've talked about in the past, I think around six months ago, but 25, 20, and 20, and we would be locked into a three-year lease. We could look at renewing after that, or we could drop out of it if we needed to with notice, we're not committed to anything if it came down to it, but, the only thing that I've mentioned before and I'll mention now is with our timing of what's going on in the city, our new construction projects and the things that we're doing, I think it'd be advantageous to do a three-year lease. It's consistent with what we've done with our escalators in the past, so, I'm not asking to necessarily sign the lease tonight, I'm just asking for approval from the council to do a three-year lease with a 25, 20, and 20 approval amounts on a three-year lease, and if we do so, then I'll actually sign it either at the beginning of March or at the open house or whatever, but we need to get it done, you know, approval this month.
So, the 25, 20, that's an additional increase each year on the rep?
That is the monthly, that would be the monthly, so what is that about eighty bucks one year, sixty and sixty, something like that? I'd have to do my math, but something like that, so, not a terribly large increase inconsistent with what we've had in the past. Traditionally, we've done one-year leases, so this would just lock us into a three-year lease for a slightly better rate.
I think we should do that. Do we need a motion?
We, I would like a motion, 'cause I do have to be able to sign the lease, and again, I'll need that by roll call.
I'd move, we sign a three-year lease for the whole of this facility.
A motion from Trump for a three-year lease at 25, 20, and 20, and authority to sign the contract.
I'll second it.
And seconded by Shawn, any other discussion on that? Clerk, would you call the roll on that?
Counselor Menzinger?
Aye.
Counselor Sarrazin?
Aye.
Counselor Shawn?
Aye.
Counselor Shawn?
Aye.
Counselor Hennessy?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Let the record reflect, we have a need on this one as well. Thank you. Then we'll go ahead and move on to 11C. This is the FY '20 budget, discussed preliminary budget and motion to set date for a public hearing. I'll go ahead and recognize the clerk on this one.
We just need a motion to set the date for the hearing, so we can get that published.
This is for next month, or this is for a special meeting? I've forgotten.
This would be at the March 14th, the meeting.
Okay, so, we'll have time to do that if we utilize it at the March 14th council meeting?
Yes, if that's the date used for the public hearing, correct?
Okay, all right, well, it won't require special, then we can do it at the March 14th, so, we'll need a motion and approval to set the preliminary and the public hearing, and I don't think we need roll call for that, do we?
No.
No, I think it'll be a simple motion. All right, can I get a motion then to go ahead and set that public hearing?
So...
Moved by Sarrazin, seconded by Trump, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries, you go ahead and put that on the next agenda, please, thank you. All right, old business, MSA, an update on current projects, culvert replacements, sewer extension, a possible motion. I'm gonna recognize Guy for just a second, if he has any comments, and I'm sure he'll turn it over to MSA, and there are items in your packet for this as well, so, any comments before MSA speaks?
No, everything's pretty straightforward, and as we expected, I feel both quotes are within reason, and I feel both projects have merit. We've talked about how the culvert need is definitely needed, sanitary extension is really up to you guys, whether we wanna help out the Diamond Club and extend that sewer or not. We do have an invoice from MSA, the engineering cost for both of those projects is at $6,800, which we asked them to do, so we will be paying, you know, just so you know, they, that's what they've charged us to get both projects to this place, so I'll let Ryan, you know, take over and let you give his information and then make some discussion there, so...
Yeah, okay, I don't have those. First thing, sanitary extension, so I gave you guys this in your packet, I kinda set it on the desk before, 'cause I changed it today, this afternoon. So, first thing, the nail drive extension, me and Guy sat down and drove, and we went through it, a couple little tweaks, everything's ready to go, I'll put a quote, it's stamped, signed, ready to go. The next step would be to go for a permit, it would be an R. The estimated cost is $25,350. And Guy would go out just for quotes because it's under the bid threshold. There would be, for the permit, there's a hundred dollar fee, and then the mayor needs to sign three copies of, three copies, one of the fee application and then one of the actual construction permit application itself. You can look at the plans, it's really... It's an extension of 108 feet of eight inch towards the gravel area right by the ball fields, and then one installation of one Y for the future bathroom that they wanna put in.
Did we keep this in the street or did it...
It is in the street, yeah, we kept it in the street, it just made it a lot easier.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah, and it didn't really save us any money by going out of the street, so...
Going the right way. I just know it'd have been discussed.
Yeah, no, it's in the street.
How much of that street will be broken up then, far?
Uh, like, the middle of two panels, so...
Like?
Eight feet, probably, right?
Yeah.
The mantle's gonna set off the end of the country a little way.
Yeah, it's probably eighty feet, sixty feet, where, the mantle is set ten feet away from the water main that's out there, that's, oh, it has to be ten feet away from the water main, so that's where the mantle's in.
And we talked about using water quality pipe.
Yep.
Because we're not exactly sure, and I have, with all the snow, I haven't been able to try and locate where that water main crosses over there, so if we get too close to it, we just, it'll amp up the price a few dollars, but then it doesn't matter, we can pass right by it, we don't have to have separation distance that way, so.
I'm sorry, I forget, how much did you say your cost?
Uh, twenty-five thousand three hundred and fifty bucks.
No, I mean your cost.
Oh, my cost?
Yeah.
So right now, we invoice for sixty-eight hundred dollars, or, and some change.
Yep. For both, but for the culvert and for?
That's for both.
Yeah, that's for.
To date, I guess, it's not all of it.
I understand, okay. Well, I think we've got plenty of money, because if we have that, this is roughly between sixty and seventy thousand for the two projects. And then we've got twenty thousand in remote art, and we've got a hundred and thirty-nine thousand in fund, so that gives us that much money to play with.
Okay, well, it sounds like the project is funded, we have the city, uh, engineer's recommendation, Guy, your recommendation here?
I think it's a worthwhile project, no matter what happens with the Diamond Club, if something else happens with that land, the sewer's that much closer to whatever happens down there in twenty years from now, so I don't think we can go wrong, in my opinion.
Comments from council?
I support the project, uh, you know, it's within city limits, and we should be, we should extend our services.
I think, uh, Diamond Club is deserving.
They're trying hard, so.
I think we need to back them.
Comments from the first? All right, well, then, we have a recommendation, I take it you're gonna, uh, we're gonna need a motion here for approval for the, not only for the cost, but also for the signature on the, on the permits, or on the fees, I'm sorry, on the application for the fees, so we're gonna need that also, I'll need a motion, and, and we'll need that by roll call.
Do you want those separately, for the two projects?
Uh, it's one project, right?
We need them separately.
We need them two, all right, so we'll, we'll need the one, let's do the first one for the twenty, twenty-five, three fifty? A motion, plus engineering.
I make a motion, we approve the sanitary extension on Naylor Drive for approximately twenty-five, three fifty, plus the engineering cost.
Motion by Saracen.
Second.
Second by Trump, uh, we'll go ahead and call that, would you call the roll call on that for me as well?
Counselor Henderson.
Aye.
Counselor Saracen.
Aye.
Counselor Sean. Counselor Trump.
Aye.
Counselor Henderson.
Aye.
I, I know there's no nays, let the record reflect, if it's approved also, and I'll get those done, and then let's go ahead and do the second project, can we get a motion?
Okay, so the next one is the culvert replacement, um, we are putting in a fifty-three inch by thirty-four inch box culvert per, uh, design report we did in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, um, doing a little grading down through the, uh, field, gonna put grass in, keep it nice and open, so that it's not far anymore up the drainage. Uh, the estimate for this one.
Thirty-nine, one ninety?
Yep, thirty-one, one ninety, um, I did reach out to Lynn County today, uh, about sharing the costs, or just to kind of discuss the project, and he sent back a, um, agreement that you guys signed in two thousand and fourteen that split the costs up, for, since you guys both own, the center line is the, you know, the city limits, they, you guys split the road, the east portion and the west portion. So you do the whole east portion, and they own the whole west portion, both sides of that road, that's how they split it, so for this project, since it's on your side, you would be financially responsible for all of it, for all of it, yeah.
Okay.
Which took a while for me to read it multiple times to figure out what was going on, but we got it figured out here, and it's attached to that project update at the back, if you want to.
Okay. So we have the information and a recommendation from the city engineer, uh, Guy, do you have a recommendation here?
The only thing we need to move forward is actual approval from Rex Naylor to put that drainage way in his field, um, that's the only thing lacking, um, I'd say if everyone's in agreement, I definitely, we need to move that water, without a doubt, um, we could approve this, um, pending any problems, you know, the only thing that Rex is going to, uh, I feel like have any problem with is the fact that he'll take a tiny little bit of ground out of production, which is mostly John's issue, and I think John is on board saying that that drainage way would have improved his cropland, and if it's not costing Rex anything, any, I don't feel like it'll be a problem, but until we get to this point, there's no use talking to Rex, you know, so...
Sure.
Um, that would be the only thing, you could approve it pending permission from Rex to.
Would there be?
So there's two things, there's a permit that we gotta send to Lynn County, we gotta get a right-of-way permit for you guys to do the work in there, and then you have the approval, um, to work on the, in the field.
What's the worst-case scenario, what happens if Rex says no, we do it anyway?
We can still slam the culvert in, it, it wouldn't get away very well, but.
You can put the culvert in and stay in the right-of-way, um, and then we just won't be able to grade on the, uh...
Which means the water would pool up, because that's part of the problem, the water comes out of the existing culvert, and it can't flow down through the field, so it has to back up a little bit first before it starts flowing down through the field, so it's pretty essential to go through the field, I'm confident we can make.
Yeah, the field's pretty flat, so.
Does this include seeding that waterway after?
Yeah, it includes.
He comes out with a, a big deal on this.
He really does.
It includes seeding the waterway, putting down, we act, we actually put down erosion mat for the whole way, just to make sure that it doesn't wash away, and then, um, we actually put filter socks, I put filter socks every fifty feet, to try and slow that water down and protect it.
Are there any additional costs associated with, other than the thirty-nine thousand, I think?
Um, I mean, there might be a fee on the Lynn County permit, but I don't.
It would be minimal.
Yeah, it'd be very minimal.
The only thing that runs through my head is, we've got a lot of snow on the ground, um, there's a lot of projects that haven't held, you know, are waiting to go first thing in the spring, and if I'm going off the quotes now, if we can't get started immediately before crops are planted, and we want to get it done as soon as possible, we may have to pay for a little crop damage, you know, if we want to go ahead and do the grading, even though the crops have been planted, again, we're working with our part-time employee, John, I'm sure he'll be reasonable, and it would be minimal, but it's possible, Joe's familiar with situations like that, I'm sure, so, it doesn't amount to that much.
It still be our benefit to pay him a few hundred bucks to get it done.
Yeah, right, that's the only other thing I can think of.
Well, we also had discussions about easements for that waterway.
Hmm, I believe we have that in our contract to provide you guys an easement, once we can get it ready and approved.
Is that permanent easement, or?
Uh, yeah, it'll be a permanent easement, I'll have to look at what we call it, but we'll do it on the center line, we'll basically call it on the center line of the ditch, the drainage way, we'll get some wording in there to, to define it, because it's not gonna be the easiest to define, since it kind of meanders a little bit, so we'll define it from like the center of the stream, thirty feet each way, or something like that.
That's something Rex has to do.
Yeah, he has to.
That'll be something that we'll get to Guy to take to Rex and talk about.
And all we have to do is, is agree to, you know, that easement's gonna basically allow us access to even mow down, so, if, and I know John mows his waterways, if he does a grade, if he chooses that he doesn't want to do it, we have the equipment to mow that waterway, so it's not a big deal.
Do we have easy access, you know, if that's planted across, we have easy access to get in there in the summertime?
Yeah.
All right, council, we have a project cost of thirty-nine thousand one hundred and ninety, Councilman Sean's part, determined that the project is funded, we have a recommendation from MSA city engineer for, for the project, we have a recommendation from Public Works, City Public Works for the project, uh, I'd go ahead and entertain a motion at this time to approve the project with the understanding that we may have some ancillary costs, and that we also need a permit and a easement or approval, um, pending from Rex Naylor to complete the project, so I'll take a motion at this time.
So who?
A motion for, a motion for approval from Sean's, I'll take that second from, uh, Minton, any other discussion? I'll need a roll call again, if you would, clerk.
Counselor Henderson. Counselor Sean.
Aye.
Counselor Sean. Counselor Saracen.
Aye.
Counselor Minton.
Aye.
There's no nays there, let the record reflect it, pass unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, by the way. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item, which is the Board of Adjustments, Planning and Zoning Discussion and Possible Motion, I ask clerk to go ahead and add this one, myself in your packet, you'll see an ordinance that we talked about in the past, this is, um, chapter fifty-four, this would be a new one, uh, that we would have to codify to be able to recognize, but, uh, chapter fifty-three is the, uh, remind me, uh, the, that's Planning and Zoning, right? And so fifty-four would be the zoning Board of Adjustments.
Yes.
All right, correct, so this would be a, a new one, uh, we had talked about it several months ago in previous council meetings, and I said that we would, uh, bring it up again at the beginning of the year, and the previous council meeting, was I not at the last one, or I brought it up the one before, uh, yes, okay, so I said that I would bring this back up at the beginning of the year to get this done, I'm not asking the council to put this into code by any means until we're completely ready for that, uh, for a couple reasons, one, I think we need to do a comprehensive look at our code, and, um, I'm not even asking for that this year, I think we should update our, um, our policy manuals first before we tie into, um, a complete redo of the code, and I think it should be, uh, again, comprehensive and a budgeted project, and so on and so forth. What I would like to do is have you review this and possibly just take it as a, um, administrative policy at this time, that we look at our zoning Board of Adjustments, uh, look at this as a possible policy by the city, and also look at our planning, um, you folks would probably, uh, meaning the council here with your experience and with the, the folks in the room, would know better than me, but as I look at our existing members on those two boards, um, I think there's a couple on each one of those boards that may not even be living in the city anymore. So I think that we need to address that and to get these boards, um, back in line with, uh, what we're doing, so I am open from anything to a discussion about this, because this chapter pretty much mirrors that planning and zoning piece, uh, it puts, uh, five-year limitations on there, and not that they couldn't, you know, serve again, uh, for the folks that we have, but, um, whether we discuss it, whether we take this on as a policy until such time as we can take on our, our code and get it completely revamped, um, or whatever we're gonna do, but, uh, I think we need to look closely at both of those boards and, uh, get them back in line. To me, that could look like either when we put out our next newsletter, ask for interest from any folks that wish to serve on them, or seek out folks that we know would be interested or qualified to do so, or whatever it's gonna be, but in their current form, we have it setting out there on our city website, uh, with people that may not even be eligible to serve on them anymore, uh, so I think we should fix it. That's my comments.
I agree.
I mean, this is nice, it defines the role better than if we accept business policy now, which is planning to codify it all.
Okay, so, uh, given that, I'd seek a motion to take chapter, what's called chapter fifty-four, just as policy for now for the city, to update and address, um, the members of our boards, to make sure that they're still all on, they're still eligible to serve on the boards, and by that I mean, they live in the city, and that they're interested and eligible to serve, and that we update our existing boards, not only zoning Board of Adjustments, but our planning, uh, Board as well.
Is it too ambitious to tell them the recommendations at the March meeting?
I don't think so.
Not ambitious for those boards?
I don't think so, I, I, I'm not saying these boards are heavily, you know, utilized, that we need them all the time, but let's at least get them to where they need to be, so, I don't, I don't think that's, uh, too aggressive at all, I think that when we send out our newsletter within the next week or so, to notify the folks in March that we're gonna have our open house, we could probably address it at that time. Is that, is that reasonable? All right.
I don't, should, should we notify those that are on the board now, if they want to continue to serve?
We've talked to several already, and, and there's a couple that are thinking about it, and, uh, yeah, um, we can do that, that's easy enough.
We also have several that have exceeded the, the five years, is what I'm, I'm trying to just do a refresh.
Yeah, sure.
I think we're, I, in best practice, we've had trouble getting people to serve, they don't.
Uh, we, we've kind of got a couple that are willing already, so.
That's good.
Yeah.
Would you want those people to attend the March meeting, so you can approve, nominate a decision?
Yeah, I, I don't think so, I think, I think once we fill the bills, then we'll go and, uh, look at what it's gonna be for, uh, bringing them up to speed on what it looks like for each type of board. Uh, do we want a motion on this, folks?
I'm a little bit weak, except what will be chapter fifty-four for the zoning Board of Adjustments as policy.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept it as policy right now, until we can get it codified by Saracen. Second by Henderson, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no, motion carries, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and move on then to... All right, building inspections, discussion, discussion of the current contract and possible motion, recognize the aye on this.
Yeah, we talked, uh, when HR Green did their presentation, um, they had mentioned that part of their services was possibly providing building inspection services, and right now, it's not feasible for them in this, in this market, they don't have enough going on to justify it, we can use Marion, uh, more cost-effectively than we could them, um, right now, I don't see any other option for us, if we want to make a change, I think, uh, moving on with, with Marion would be the, the way to go at this point, I received assurances when I talked to Gary Hanson, that, you know, they would be here probably one-day service, you know, two-day if they were swamped, and that's better than we've been getting, and cost is more, but we've discussed, um, not being happy with what we had previous as well, so.
Okay, so we have a recommendation from Public Works here to change our current, uh, method for building inspections, to utilize Marion for their inspections at, uh, at their cost, um, questions from council on this, what's the question here?
Refresh me, what was their cost to?
Sixty-five dollars an hour.
Sixty-five, yeah, we're getting towards fifty now.
Yeah, it's a two-part, it's a mileage plus an hourly, and it's, it's a little bit convoluted, but it probably winds up being about fifty, yes, so.
Is this an ongoing agreement, or a year by your contract?
Um, I think it's just an ongoing agreement, once we, we need to, we'd have to, the one thing he suggested was we need to modify our twenty-eighty that we have with Marion to include that service, he doesn't think the language in the twenty-eighty we have would cover that, so there'll be a modification and a, and a fresh twenty-eighty, uh, to do it, and then we can just move forward at that point.
What's the process for citizens, do they contact you, and you initiate that, or are they expecting to reach out to Marion?
Um, I, I need to have a discussion with Gary about that, actually, what he would prefer, um, whether it come through our office and be forwarded to them, or maybe it, it might be a little, if it's coming from random contractor and homeowner, um, into Marion, they're gonna have to clarify, is this in Marion, or is this in, I, I don't know what his preference will be, but we'll find out, and we haven't got the packet for a new home put together like we've talked about, but it's coming quickly, because spring's right around the corner, um, I'd like to be able to meet with him and, and make that part of that, that packet, and, uh...
I would think it would come through our office.
I think so too, because we need to know.
And otherwise you're gonna have people.
You know, completely bypassing us, and then we don't know.
We're not even gonna know it, they've even got a building from it.
Yeah, and that's the way I would perceive it too, but I, you know, a lot of these contractors that work in both towns, once they find out we're using Marion, we're probably not gonna stop them from just calling Marion on certain things, but, you know, as long as Marion tells them, hey, you need to go through, you need to contact Alvernet first, that's fine, if it's just a clarification on a permit that's ongoing, yeah, by all means, go ahead and call Marion, that's fine, so, they, like, just a lot of details need to be hammered out, and we'll get there, that's no problem, so, um, I'm assuming, I don't know if you would wanna, if this is what you want to do, if you want to motion now, or wait till we have a updated twenty-eighty and just do it all, let me meet with Gary, hammer out some details, get the twenty-eighty the way it wants to be and do it all at once, or do you want a motion, that's up to you.
I mean, they've, they've been coming out here now, aren't they?
Well, they're, they're doing electrical, yeah, for us.
I mean, I, we might as well wait till we get it all done and...
Get the whole package wrapped up, have it on next month's.
Is there a sense of urgency here, do you need it now?
Not until, no, probably May, when people start building houses and building decks and remodeling their, you know, kitchens and stuff, so, we haven't had a new building permit in a couple months, two, three months now, so, yeah, I can have it ready for you next month, if you want.
Like we want this table until the point of...
All right, thanks.
All right, you agree with that, Kayla, until we have the twenty-eighty?
Yeah.
All right, would you add that, clerk, to the next month's agenda then, pending the twenty-eighty, thank you. All right, last item, the, oh, the fire sta, uh, I'm sorry, the fire station updating possible motion, I'll go ahead and handle this, uh, we did meet with, uh, one of our, uh, three groups, uh, to make a decision on where we were gonna be at for our, uh, fire station, um, the RFP response said that we had a tentative timeline to make a decision on that, possibly at this particular meeting, uh, I can tell you that in, uh, having a discussion with that group, we have not reached that decision yet, uh, we're still potentially working out some details, so, um, I'm gonna meet with the, uh, two council people that are on that group this evening after council, um, as well as the fire chief, and have a discussion with them on where we're gonna go with that, and, uh, we'll make a decision probably later, if we need to make a special council meeting, I'll ask for that, if not, we'll move forward with the decision in March. Any questions about that from the council? Very good, last item on there is city hall open house discussion date and time, I did touch on this in my comments, and, uh, that was one hour, I believe, is what we're allocating, or do we think we need longer counsel for that, for the March meeting?
I think, I think in a, in a...
Hours, no.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and get that set up for the March meeting, one hour before, uh, would like to go ahead and get that notification out, uh, with that newsletter and any other updates, I put it as an agenda item, because I would like... I put it as an agenda item, because I would like any council people that want anything on that newsletter to get those updates within the next week, if we could, for any items that you want to discuss or put out to the public within the next week or so. So, I'm sure you have any updates of yourself or whatever that we wanna put on there. The last one we put out, I believe, was two pages? Just one. Okay, single page. Okay, so, we'll go ahead and get those items put together, get an update on there, and we'll get that out, so.
And we have the email list we've been collecting through the website as well. Can we send it both ways? Do you wanna get me a, or I'll send you, I'll make sure you have the email list, and you can send that electronic as well.
Very good. I think we'll have a nice little open house. I'm sure we can do something for refreshments or something like that, too, so. Non-alcoholic. Very good. All right, I don't have anything else, other than I would like to speak with folks afterwards.
Are you planning on setting up a meeting next week sometime for the budget?
Yes.
Everybody's aware of that.
Yeah.
Pass me before Thursday, right?
Yes. I think I was gonna get around to start, and see if we can find some kind of work on that, right?
I'm sure I told you all that I'll be in Des Moines at a Ira Rural Water Conference your Monday through Wednesday, so.
Oh, I'm gonna ask for final comments, and I'm gonna start with Josh. Nope. I don't have anything else, Josh. Daniel? Guy? That's it. I'd seek a motion.
I do have one question.
Oh, would you?
I...
We've got a plan on budgeting anything for the fire station at all.
Oh, yes. That did come up during budget, and we do probably need to plug additional funds in, so.
Well, you know, that's something that's gonna have to be discussed.
Yes. I have a question. We didn't budget anything for Moot Heart Street. I mean, this is a project. This is not, we can't possibly put enough money in the budget to pay for this thing, not knowing where it is at this point. It's impossible. So, do you, I mean, that's my question. I don't know. I don't know what the right thing to do is, but, you know, when we decided to go with Moot Heart Street, there was nothing in the budget for it. We did it as a project.
What are you, what are you asking? For Moot Heart, it's a bonded...
Why are you trying to plug money in for the fire station when we don't even know what it's gonna be?
Well, I think you're talking...
I was just talking about, you know, we're not gonna pay for this all at one time. Just put some X number of dollars in there, so we don't have to...
Aren't they already in there? Well, not in the budget in the, yeah.
Yeah, but we could, we could, we could refresh what we took out for the land acquisition and bring that light on back up to where it was.
Sure.
And we could certainly do that.
I'm just curious as to how we would come up with any form of number, not knowing where we're at.
You can't just plug something in.
Yeah. But I reference Moot Heart because that was not a budgeted, and we, it was a project, so we did.
I get it, but it was also a bonded project.
Sure.
Yeah. I mean, it had a funding, a real getting funding source.
This could wind up having a bond.
Right.
Guy, did you budget for a payment for the bond, because that is a budget?
Well, well, Ryan made a good point.
Is that budgeted for?
I think that's what you budgeted.
You don't budget for the, but they're remote. You budget for what your loan, your payments are gonna be on that. Again, you don't know what the loan's gonna be.
We don't know what the loan, if there is a loan.
It's a lot less, it's a lot less scary number, I guess.
Yeah. So, putting some in at least cover that first payment, and at least, or like Charlie said, refreshing.
Just put X number of dollars in.
Yep.
Right. I agree with that. But spanning over a multi, a multi-year project, you could bond for funding prior to a project multi-year, or we could set aside the funding that we know are gonna be real fees, such as consulting dollars prior to.
Yep. Just wanted to know where you're going with that, just to help make it easier.
Go ahead.
I just wanna compliment you on having a take meeting and getting these over in a reasonable time.
Look at this. Six minutes till, thank you. All right, given that, I'll seek a motion to adjourn. Moved by Trum. Second, I'm sorry, moved by Vincent, second by Trum. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion carries. Thank you all for attending. Have a good evening. Drive safely.